Can't start her.
I don't know if we can start.
Okay, we will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, September 27th. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck? Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Sofa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone? And vocal singer? We have 10 out of 14.
All right, thank you.
Leah just walked in.
Thank you.
Oh, let the record reflect Alderman Lehman has arrived. 7:04. We have 11 of 14. Okay, and a reminder to please speak directly in the microphone for the BATV broadcast and recording. Item number three is approval of minutes from July 12th, 2022. Do you have any comments, corrections? Not going to get a motion.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Malley and Uwer, second. Roll call, please.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vocal singer? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
And Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay. Next is item number four, which is items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? What changes for tonight? Okay. Next is item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything? Anybody online?
There's no hands up.
Okay, then we will move right on to item number six. Presentation on the water treatment plant rehabilitation progress update. Welcome.
Hello. Stop share. Hello, I'm Emily and I will be giving the construction update from, I guess, the last couple of months now. So since May 24th was when we gave the last one. The chlorine pumps have gone in now, so the existing brine system's been demolished. The new chlorine pump skids have been installed and the electrical work for that is still ongoing. The water treatment plant two expansion, the brine building. The new brine system retrofit has been completed and that system is now online. The salt pallets are loaded inside the new building. Electrical installation is still ongoing there. There's some items that are still being finished and the finished trim installation is still ongoing as well. Well 11 rehab, well 11 is back in service and that transducer's been installed. And then well number 10 rehab, that equipment installation has been completed. The startup's completed and the transducer is installed. Well 10 is back in service. High service pump rehab, high service pump number two and number five were reinstalled in July. High service pump number three and high service pump number six rehab is still ongoing. Dualator number two rehab, the filter area rehab work has been completed. The media reinstallation is complete. The detention tank rehab work is complete. The aerator rehab work is complete. The new valves piping and control work is complete. Startup is still ongoing and dualator number two is back in service. Steve's going to come back up for the change order debt authorization?
Words you never want to hear, but you were probably expecting. And I know that there's been some advanced discussion and there's something on the agenda, I believe, tonight about debt authorization ordinance. So I thought it would be worth talking a little bit about the changes that have occurred on the project that have come to light in the last few months. Got more details. As Emily just noted, the repairs have been completed on dualator number two. But that is the majority of where the additional costs have come from. You've heard us talk previously and the reports about the nature of the dualators. Similar to wells, you don't know what you get until you get inside there with the dualators. We weren't quite sure. We tried to project as much as possible, but we were not able to get inside the dualators to do inspection prior to construction. So we had to take best estimates as far as the work items that might be accomplished in there. A great majority of the work that occurred did have line items, had unit costs associated with them. It just so happened that the condition of the inside of the tanks was much worse than anticipated. So the costs thereof were significantly greater. And this is a majority of the additional costs that we have incurred so far. So a quick kind of step back about the original scope and cost of the original dualator work. So the original rehab cost that was bid was about $575,000 for both dualators. Cost for each dualator is noted there. The interior and exterior was only noted to receive spot repairs. We're not anticipating a full coating replacement, particularly for the interior. We were hoping and anticipating that the coating system would still have some integrity to it. Structurally, again, anticipating, hoping that the structure would be intact and not much repair would be required there. And then the aerator components, which the water goes through an aerator on top of a detention tank and it flows through the detention tank into the filter, where the water is filtered before flowing out. The aerator component, there was not any anticipated rehab for that as well. So the original, as a reminder, the original contract amount for the overall project was just over 4.4 million. And we'll come back to that here in a few slides. So again, original contract 4.4 million, about 575,000 of which was anticipated for the two dualator rehabs. What we found in constructions, move this around a little bit here, is that the aerator trays, which are in the upper left-hand corner there, not so good-looking, right? Those needed to be replaced. Those were not functional anymore. So those were replaced as part of this project, similarly with the aerator spray nozzles. The detention tank floor, which is where the water flows in after the aerator, was severely pitted, had some holes in it. Became kind of a structural issue and there was quite a bit of welding that had to be done for the detention tank in order to get it back to the condition where it would be serviceable moving forward. Additionally, there was a collector trough. The water collects in troughs underneath the detention tank to flow through four individual filter cells. Those troughs were hanging on by threads, basically. The supports were almost completely worn away. So there was talk initially about replacing the troughs altogether, which would have come at an even more significant cost in addition to time in order to procure those troughs. What we were able to do is work with a structural engineer to design a new support system where we could reuse the existing troughs. So that did save some time and money being able to do that, but there was still a bit of expense incurred there. On the inside, the interior of the units was not in good shape. So instead of doing spot repairs, it was required to do full sandblasting and recoating of the full interior of the dualator, which there is a lot of nooks and crannies and a lot of surface area that had to be recoded because of that. Some other minor things related to piping and supports, detention tank drain line was replaced, ceiling of the concrete pad, underdrain piping improvements. Those things also were adders that increased the cost and the time in order to complete the project. Wanted to make a point here that the improvements that were made, there was a lot of talk back and forth. I mean, by the time we got into it and understood what the repairs were going to be, we had to make some serious deliberations about the fate of these dualators. Given the circumstances, it was decided that it would be worth it to spend the money now to rehab them in order to give them another 20 years of life, which is what we're expecting from them. After 20 years, and this will be something that needs to be evaluated in another study and looking at the financing and your options for treatment moving forward as well. But we would not expect these dualators to be able to be used again, rehabbed and used in another 20 years. The steel is just not going to be, there's not going to be enough steel there that can be reused. So we would anticipate after another 20 years that you would get rid of the dualators and replace it with another treatment. But for right now, this gives you the best bang for your dollar as far as getting the treatment that you're currently getting for another 20 years. So the original rehab cost, again, was, as noted there, the extras that were incurred, which the work is complete now and the dualator is online, was just under $300,000 of additional fees related to it. Now, here's the kicker, is that because of the additional cost and the time to complete the work for dualator number two, that delayed the work for dualator number one to be accomplished. And it's gone beyond the final completion date of the project. So a time extension is warranted and will have to be granted for the completion of the dualator number one work. And because of that, the contractor is really owed some escalations because of the costs that have been inflated related to steel, paint, and labor. So we don't know currently because dualator number one is still online. It has not, the rehab has not started yet. But we are anticipating as a baseline, the same scope of work to be done for dualator number one as was incurred for dualator number two. And after working with a contractor related to the cost escalations anticipated, we believe that that is going to come in over $400,000 of extras for that dualator. So again, some discussion about the options, but it was decided that this was the best course forward to continue the level of treatment. Balance of other various extras and credits are anticipated to result in a total maximum extra of $600,000 in the project, which is actually less than if you add up those extras for dualators two and one, because the other net is actually a decrease overall from all the other adders and deducts. So really, it does come down to these dualators and repairs and the unknowns going into the project. And unfortunately, what the condition was inside the dualators when, dualator number two, when we got into it and what we anticipate to happen with dualator number one, when that's taken offline, which should be within the next month here. So the total amended contract amount is estimated to be around $5 million, up from the 4.4 million with the original contract amount. So that's the $600,000 that is discussed in the debt authorization ordinance that you'll see in the packet tonight. That's a bit of an explanation of where that came from. And I believe Peggy had a write-up about that, where it was discussed how to fund that, but with the interest rate and being able to pay the loan off over 20 years at an extremely low interest rate. That is very, very good financing option for the city to be able to pay for this work that needed to be done. I'll come, well, let me stop there. I'll talk about the next steps towards the completion of the project. But are there any specific questions about that? And you can certainly ask after I'm done with the next few slides as well.
This may be a question for Peggy, but the addition when we bumped that up in the payments, that would still be at the original interest rate from the earlier loan?
That is correct. It's an amendment to the original loan using the original interest rate.
Then that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's 1.25%, somewhere in that ballpark.
1.35 is what the memo.
1.35.
1.35, thanks Peggy.
Make sure we got that out there because I think that that's, that at least makes it, I guess, doable when you look at what the reality is for everybody else, that if you wanted to build a house last year versus this year and the amount of money you would spend different in the, just the interest payments over the time of the loan is just crazy.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we know why that, when we got inside the dualator number two, it was in worse condition than what we were expecting?
The reality is, we didn't know what to expect, but we took our best guess as to the amount of work that would be required and identified tasks that we knew would need to be completed in the dualator. So we had line items for those. We had unit prices from the bid. They just happened to be more, more work required than we were hoping and anticipating. It's, the dualators are 30 years old. You know, sometimes you see steel tanks, depending on the water quality and the conditions that it's in. If it's not in a, if the oxygen, if the water is in there and the oxygen isn't allowed to get in there too much, it can be preserved fairly well. In this case, it was not. And we believe likely is because the chemical that was added, the hydrous manganese oxide for treatment. It's an oxidant and it had a pretty large effect on the condition of the coating and the steel when we got in there.
Thank you.
But on the troughs that you were able to?
Salvage.
Salvage, yeah. And obviously there were the time concerns and supply issues with that. But let's say they were available. What, you said 20 years they're going to be done. Well, if we had new troughs, how long would that?
Well, the troughs are just one component of it. It's part of the overall treatment system. But that in and of itself wouldn't be able to save the dualators overall. The condition of the steel is likely not going to be salvageable in the dualators overall over the next 20 years. But the troughs, we got costs for new troughs and they were over $100,000. So the fix saved a lot of money in order to just put new supports in there as opposed to replacing the troughs. But yeah, the troughs wouldn't have necessarily in themselves extended the life of the dualators.
So if we had got, we were able to say there was new troughs available and we put those in, 20 years would come up.
You'd still, exactly, still be throwing that out.
We might have some good troughs left.
Yeah, maybe. See what the steel market's like at that, right?
I just look at this and I think of how, you know, typically you'll look at something like that, that's coated and you're not going to know until you go to clean the coating off to redo it, how bad everything is until that's underneath it, until you clean it off. And I remember asking those questions when we got into that to begin with. Because I figured that that was going to be one of those things, that if we had to start replacing steel, the cost would just go crazy with it.
Thankfully, I mean, with dualator number two, the one that was completed, steel prices were reasonable when they bid the project. So we got that done for a very reasonable cost comparatively speaking to now. But with dualator one, you know, it's owed the contractor because of the time extension and price escalations for some of those factors.
So what did they figure, about 30%?
Over 30%.
Over 30% for the increase?
And it's steel and paint, which are two of the things that have inflated most, right?
Yeah, it's kind of gone crazy.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so we'll talk about the next steps here. We have continuing to chemical pump installation, high service pumps three and six rehab. Hopefully those are back and online. Those are the last two of the six to be replaced. And hopefully those are back online in the next month. They will be getting the well nine rehabilitation within the next month. And that's another one that we talked about, you know, in order to save costs, do we take well nine rehab out of the project? The price we got for well nine rehab, I mean, if we put that out to bid now on its own, it would be at least 50% higher. So we looked at that and said, with the payoff, you know, the best bang for your buck, you're definitely in good shape going, moving forward with well nine rehab at this time. So that's the game plan. Beginning the dualator number two rehab is discussed and finishing up some site improvements. Here's generally how the schedule's laying out. We anticipate the chlorine system improvements. Stuff's over here on the left-hand side, sorry. Just do this one second. The chemical pumps are going, are being installed and anticipated to be started up, started up by the end of October. The high service pump rehabs, again, hopefully in the next month, we anticipate them to be back on-site, installed and started up. And then the well nine rehab and the dualator one work started up in October. Well nine should be back online by the end of the year. Dualator one will probably go out into February 2023 before it's completed, which should be well in advance of water production picking up again in April, May of next year. So the amended final completion date is likely going to be February of 2023 from the original or the current completion date of September. So that's how we're looking for the rest of the project at this point. Is there any other questions?
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody online here with questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Don't like it, but we understand it.
I understand that. Are you able to take over, Laura?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right, thank you. Right. Next then is the facade improvement grant, resolution 22-100-R. Facade improvement grant for 106 West Wilson Street, BEI. And Anthony, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes, thank you Alderman Wolf. Before you all, tonight we have the facade improvement grant for 106 West Wilson Street. We all know that's the corner building there that's known as the, one of the functions as the chamber building. This particular grant did have to go through HPC as it is in the historic district. And it did receive positive approval to come from the HPC, which is why we're able to bring it here to the committee at a whole. This particular grant will help with the restoration, repair, and painting of the stained glass windows and all existing windows, including a replacement of all existing windows that are excluding the stained glass windows. This is going to be an amount of $5,000 to Batavia Enterprises. They decided to use artist's touch as their lowest bid. It would be nice to get some, you know, aesthetically pleasing looks for our downtown. And this is one of the starts to that with the facade improvement grant. Have a lot of different areas out here in town that certainly can use a little bit more TLC and this is an opportunity to do that. And tonight we do have Wendy. She'd like to share a few words regarding the project and a little bit more questions or comments that you all might have for her. Wendy?
Wendy.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Wendy Reed, from the operations department at BEI Commercial Real Estate. This building is historically significant. It's also known as the old post office. That's what everybody really calls it. It has the two bulldogs in front right on the corner of Shumway and Wilson Street. It's been a really long time since this building was attended to as far as the windows go. The old wood that's in the windows is in ash wood. It's actually very beautiful, but a lot of it was rotted and needed restoration. And so it's been a little bit of a process. We needed to scrape back all of the old paint and painted the trim around the windows, waiting to receive the new Pella windows, which will be energy efficient for the tenants in the building. They're all very happy about that. And the color scheme has changed on the building as well. It was all like a white trim and the front steps used to have white railings and gray, you know, beneath it. So we have changed the color scheme of the building and I think it's really looking beautiful. I don't know if any of you might have noticed what we've done so far. The windows are supposed to be in, I'm told, with the material issues sometime around November 16th. And I just think it's looking great and I think that the stained glass windows are so beautiful at the building. We're not really touching them, we're just restoring them. We're making sure that they're all secure and in place. And I also think that the new paint makes them stand out even better, if you've noticed that as well.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Wendy?
I just wanted to make a comment that the funding for the facade grants comes from the TIF. And it's one of the things that City Council has decided to prioritize and to use that money so that people like BEI can make improvements to their buildings. But it's kind of a collaboration because they are matching grants. And so the property owners themselves are also making a significant investment in beautifying the buildings in our downtown. So it's been a very successful project for us, or a very successful program.
And we thank you for the opportunity. Just in case anyone would like to know, the total project cost is $91,853.89, so. Any other questions?
I always think this is a good idea that, you know, we talk about these because it's not only the city putting money back from the TIF into those buildings, but it's the property owners putting usually significantly larger sums of money back into the buildings to maintain them or upgrade them or, you know, make them a better use or better for use within the downtown especially.
And with being such a high-profile building right in the center of downtown Batavia, I think that that's a great thing too.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, then I will make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 22-100-R. Facade improvement grant for 106 West Wilson Street, BEI.
Second.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Serone? Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Sofa?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Sofa.
Aye.
Thank you. 13 out of 14, motion carried.
Thank you, Council. Thank you Wendy and BEI.
Sure. And for the record, Sarah, what time did you get into the meeting?
It was, I believe, 7:08.
7:08, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next is item number eight, which is ordinance 2243, an ordinance amending ordinances adopted by the City Council of the City of Batavia, Kane and DuPage County, authorizing and providing for the issue of waterworks revenue bonds, i.e. PA of said city. Alderman Chantet?
Indeed, so this is for the 4.425 million in improvements to the plant. This is a very good rate, interest rate is basically net interest margin at banks right now, at 1.35%, which is phenomenal. So I'm very glad that we were able to get this additional financing through the state. I would move that we send ordinance 22-43 over to council to increase the loan.
Second.
Motion by Chantet, second by Malley. Any discussion?
Hi, this is Peggy. I just wanted to say that the amount of the new amount is 5,101, amending it from 4.425. So just to clarify what that motion is.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, can we get a roll call, please?
Chantet?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone? Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Beck has joined the meeting. Let the record reflect that Alderman Beck has joined the meeting. Bring this up to thirteen out of fourteen. Right, up next is item number nine, which is resolution 22-102-r. Approving an emergency contract with Ray's Electrical and Boring Services to install HDPE conduit in the area of Pine Street and Woodland Hills Drive for an amount not to exceed $129,984, which includes a 10% contingency. Alderman Miller?
All right.
For you tonight?
Many of you might have heard, we lost power a lot one of these days. And it was due to an electrical fault over on the, I believe, the east side. So the electrical crews have determined that there was a fault and that these wires were at the end of life so that we needed to replace them on an emergency basis. So that's what we're coming, that's what we're coming today, this memo is from Gary, is about, so.
Thank you. Yeah, last week was a rough week for the electric utility and the week prior to that was a rough week for the water utility. So it's been a couple of rough weeks for public works and tonight is unfortunately a night of extra costs for the city. My memo kind of outlines the fact that we actually need to replace about 1,500 feet of direct burial underground cable that was originally installed with the subdivision. That cable is going on about 50 years old now, 40 to 50 years old. It's original to the subdivision and it is at its end of life. Nowadays, we install conduits underground so that we can pull cables through them. And if the cables, well, they will, it's not a matter of if, but when the cables fall 50 years from now, we'll be able to pull the cables out and then replace them with new cables in the conduit. That's the modern way of constructing underground. Ray's Electric, actually, we just awarded another emergency contract to Ray's Electric, if you recall in our last council meeting. They did come out. They actually were, a gentleman drove over from Indiana last week to come here. He's provided us with really good service. He walked the site. He gave a quote. That's the 129,000, which includes a 10% contingency. And Steve Allen, our assistant electric superintendent, provided me with a list of other budget items, just so council has a feel for savings elsewhere within the electric budget. If you recall earlier this year, we got rid of the SCADA AT&amp;T line that was costing us $17,000 a month. So we're no longer incurring that cost. We realized about $25,000 savings in oil testing, about $20,000 savings in Cherry Park testing, about $80,000 savings with the SCADA upgrade, about $50,000 in savings for substation services. And we still have one contract outstanding, and that is for wildlife protection. That's actually $200,000 in the budget. And we'll, we can hold off on that contract until the end of 2022 if we need to in order to make sure that there's enough funds in place. So we do have enough savings from other contracts to cover the cost of this work. And so we are recommending approval of this resolution.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. I know, Gary, that you mentioned that the stuff, the new boxes are going to be more in front of the house to preserve the, the back. Did any of the residents, you know, and you reached out to them, did any of the residents, you know, reach out and complain about it and say, yeah, you can dig up the back of my yard or?
We've, we've, Steve Allen, who I just mentioned, and Mustafa, who's our electric operations manager, they've been walking out there and actually have met with the residents. There's actually been residents who have been willing to offer us easements and, and, and. So I believe the reception has been kind of the opposite in that the residents are happy to have the new infrastructure going in. The rear yards there, as you might expect in any older subdivision, you have mature trees, you have mature landscaping, you have sheds, you have fences. The rear yards, as in most subdivisions, are a bit of a mess to try and work.
Right.
So as far as I know, the neighbors have been cooperative and appreciative of what we're doing.
Okay.
Mark? I guess on that note, is it, then it's better to be in front too, because in the rear you have, you're generally going to have more flooding issues too and like ponding and stuff that would happen right around those systems or?
Generally in the older neighborhoods, that's a true statement. The wiring is all going to still be running in the, in the back, but we'll have access to our equipment, which will be closer out to the street, which is advantageous. If you drive in any of our newer subdivisions, the subdivisions, subdivisions built post-1990s, you'll find all of our equipments out front.
I guess additionally, so this stuff is end of life. Has technology improved that this should last longer? Or to be able to keep the moisture from getting into these systems?
So the direct burial cable, again, 40-year-old or 50-year-old direct burial cable, a lot of times had a paper component to the insulation, which was paper and an oil. And so yes, the technology has advanced with respect to wire technology, if you, if you imagine over the last 40 years.
Kind of one clip, kind of piggybacking off of that. Obviously, this is probably a big issue in that neighborhood because of when it was built. Have you identified other areas where it might be a concern that may need to be put in the budget?
We're already working in Windmill Cove, really the whole southeast side of town. Woodland Hills, if everyone recalls, was originally developed unincorporated in the county. And so that, that subdivision originally wasn't built to any Batavia standards. And so over time, we're, we will be in the southeast part of town replacing direct burial cable for many years to come, cycling it through into conduit.
Okay. And is that what they're doing on Redant Road? I know we probably voted on it and I just.
That's exactly what they're doing, is they're going in with directional boring. They're installing new conduit.
Yep.
Because there's direct burial cable there. Then we'll go back and pull wire through that conduit.
And they're in Cleveland now, so.
Yep. That neighborhood down there.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Does anybody online have any comments or questions? Okay, don't see any hands. Want to make a motion?
So if there's nothing else, I can make a motion that we approve this.
Second. Motion by Miller, second by Sofa. Roll call please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Simone? And Vogel Singer?
Aye.
Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, on those last three, I would think the improvement grant, we should put on regular agenda. The bond issue, we can put on consent. And then this one, I think we could put this on consent too.
Sorry, I should be up there, but this one has to go on regular agenda because we got to wait for a little bit.
Okay, sure. Then this one will go on regular agenda so we can wait for moving bidding. All right. And then next will be item number 10, which is a discussion on city council and committee of the whole meeting times.
Want me to start things off? So just, it's something nice to review from time to time. It was a few years back when both of the city council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting were held at 7:30 and the city council or the committee of the whole decided that they were going to begin that meeting 30 minutes earlier. And so I had read an article about a trend to move meeting times to earlier to better coincide with the regular workday for the staff, so long as it didn't interfere with the elected officials' ability to come to meetings. One of the questions asked as part of that article was for those municipalities who had changed their, the starting time for their meetings, if they saw any falloff in the amount of public attendance at those meetings. And the municipalities who were responding said they had not. So I just thought I'd put it forth for discussion if it would be something that would help the efficiency of our bodies here.
One question that I have is if we were to move it and as we look forward for our meetings, is it, and I know for us, you know, right now, because of the ordinance by the governor, whatever that is, the proclamation, that, you know, we can do remote. Is there going to be that possibility to still allow residents, even if we all come back, to be able to join in?
Yes.
You know, not being present?
Yes. The Open Meetings Act requirement for in-person attendance was for elected officials. And so we could offer the opportunity for the general public to attend electronically if they so wished.
I like the times the way they are, just selfishly from my own perspective in terms of being able to get things done. Because I don't necessarily have a job that ends at five o'clock every day. So this is generally, these are generally good times though, because my job usually doesn't go that late. So I do like the seven and 7:30 time starts personally.
Yeah, I respect that. My response was going to be here, or is that, yes, I would like to get home earlier, you know, start earlier, finish earlier, but I understand that other people, you know, don't have that same schedule. It's flexible like mine, so, you know.
Dan, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yep, I work for a retail and commercial bank. The soonest I could be in the city of Batavia physically, I would be 6:30 and that would be likely with sweat on my brow.
Abby, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say that an earlier, an earlier start time might dissuade younger people from running for office for two reasons, that they might not have the flexibility in their career to leave early, as already mentioned. And also it interferes with a lot of kid activities. So for young, for parents of young kids that have sports or other just like child care transfer needs right after work, you know, taking them immediately to a different sitter to head straight to a meeting, it would just be tough. I know four years ago for me personally, it would have, it would have been a factor in my decision to run for office. So in, to try and be more inclusive of more people at different stages of life, I'd like to leave it where it's at.
And Sarah?
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you. I feel the same as Alderman Beck with kid activities. It is a lot happening in the after-school hours and the start time of 7:00 p.m. usually allows for those things to be done and for me to be able to sit down. And so anybody in this similar phase of life, if it was earlier, that would present more of a challenge. I don't know if it would be possible to think about moving the city council start time to 7:00 p.m. I don't know what the reasoning is behind the 7:30 p.m., but that would be, maybe it'd be in the middle to get both of them starting at the 7:00 p.m. and just streamline that. That was just a thought I had. But if we leave it at 7:30, that is fine with me too. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I would like to see both meetings start at seven if possible.
That was going to be the one thing I was going to suggest. I wanted everybody to get their, their feelings out before we got around and discussing that. But I think just to try to standardize it, I think we should be both at seven o'clock. A lot of times I've heard from people that they, you know, show up to a,
Yeah, they get confused.
Committee meetings and they're here at 7:30 and whatever they were coming down to listen to or wanted to be part of is already over by the time they get here. So, you know, I think if we were to do anything with it, that would be the one thing that I would support, would be changing them both to seven o'clock so that they're both at the same time. The fact that we've now also gone to four meetings a month, basically, instead of, what was it?
Seven sometimes.
Seven. So I, I think that, you know, if we do standardize those and we do have the meetings, you know, every other week, I think that that, to try to keep it the same moving forward, I think is a better thing than to keep possibly moving things around. I think that's better. And I also do think that we probably will want to keep the ability of people to be part of the meeting online as well as that. I don't know that, how long it will keep going with the governor. Whenever, I guess it's right after the election, he'll stop that. And, you know, we won't have to worry about that anymore. Mark?
Yeah, I agree. Both at seven seems fine. I don't, earlier would be tough. And I, and I feel for staff and I absolutely encourage staff to do these remotely. I mean, I think it's, I mean, most of the meetings I do at work are remote anyway. They're conducted just fine. And when staff has been remote, it's been fine. I mean, if, the only time is when you have to have like, when you know that there's going to be a deep discussion.
Right.
They, they're smoother face to face. That would be the only time that it would be recommended to be. Sounds good. Somebody be here, but I think just be remote. I mean, at home, be with your families. I spend that little bit of time to be with my family and then, okay, I'm off again.
That was going to be one other question that I had. For staff, is there any typical thing that staff would do on a night when they know they have to be here on a Monday or Tuesday night, that they have to be here till nine o'clock at night or something? Are they coming in at 10 o'clock in the morning or are they just extending the day out?
Just extending the day out. But the flexibility of being able to present items from home, so long as it isn't something that's a highly, you know, controversial, contested or, you know, very complex issue is definitely a very welcome change because for most items, staff has been present when they had to present any of the items on the agenda.
Is there an opportunity for staff to flex the time if they know that they have to be here, especially with a conversation that might need to go later? Is there that opportunity?
It depends upon what the workload is. And right now it's very, very high. And so having time off would be detrimental to being able to get all of the work done that's necessary. But we certainly do offer that flexibility. It's, you know, it's not so rigid as to suggest that, you know, completing things from eight o'clock to five o'clock. There is flexibility for the salaried positions within our organization, so long as the workload is being completed.
Alan?
Yes.
So according to the Open Meetings Act, could we move the city council meeting time this calendar year?
Yes.
We could. Even though it's already been posted, certain dates, certain times.
I think if we change the timeframe on it, it just has to be within the guidelines for that. And that has to be 48 hours through business days.
I'd kind of like to check on that and see if that's possible because we are talking about changing that city council meeting starting time.
The city council, I think the cow would be a little bit more flexible, but.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think you might be onto something there.
Yeah.
I think there was a reason we kept it at 7:30, but we are coming to the end of the year.
Yeah. And regardless of, I think if we're going to do that, we would just make sure we do it correctly. So that we don't have any issues, because I'm sure there's somebody out there that would love to call us on that if we didn't do it correctly. In fact, I know that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to item number 11, project status. Laura?
Thank you. One thing that I wanted to mention first, because we were talking about the project that was necessary because of the power outages that we had. And Gary mentioned that the week before that, we had a couple of very significant water main breaks. You know, it's not unexpected that at some points we're going to experience situations where there are types, some types of failures of our utilities that require emergency repairs. And while we certainly receive our fair share of, of feedback and about the frustration of the utilities being, being out sometimes, one thing that's consistent is people mention how wonderful the utility employees are. And with regard to those water main breaks that we experience, Gary and I received some really nice messages from the folks who were affected by that. And they had very kind words to say about how diligently and methodically our employees worked throughout the night to try to fix those things. And we get the same kind of feedback about the electric linemen too. And so we're really proud of the work that they do and we appreciate that our residents appreciate them too. The Water Division right now is working to replace the lead water services on Spring Street. Kind of a start of us replacing those lead service lines for which the Water Division worked so hard to get us the $4 million grant. What was great is that the city also had received CDBG grant fundings for resurfacing on Spring Street. So the last thing we wanted to do was have to use the CDBG grants to resurface the road and then only have to dig up the brand-new road to replace the lead service line. But we seem to have managed to work out the timing of that project to, in order to get them completed prior to the resurfacing work. We're doing hydrant flushing right now, so crews are working from. We're doing hydrant flushing right now, so crews are working from our west side to our east side, and they're currently in the area of downtown. The annual sidewalk repair program has been completed, and right now, we're working on our punch list items. And contractors will be in this week, beginning to mill the roadways in preparation for asphalt resurfacing, again, due to the, the strikes at the gravel pits, it got started much later, but then, while we thought we weren't even going to be able to begin our resurfacing program, it turns out other municipalities chose to cancel their resurfacing program, so we actually were able to complete ours this year. There's been a Nycor project on North River Street. They are having to replace a section of their service lines, and we have continuously been providing updates to the area businesses and property owners to keep them up to date on Nycor's project on that, progress on that project. I spoke with the Park District, asking what the status was of their additional work. They were having Hitchcock Design do, and have they received their report yet? And they have not yet received their report. They expect it sometime later in October or November, and so they said the earliest that they would be ready to come back and have a joint meeting, might be December or January. I just also wanted to call out Ed Larson in our Information Systems Department. A while back, Alderman Chantet had asked for a monthly report on the FOIA responses that we were making, and Ed Larson took it upon himself, not only to create a way for us to see what all of our monthly responses were, but he used a new product that, software product, that City Council approved in our last budget for document management, that is called Laserfish, and he built an entire system for FOIA request, online FOIA request and response, and workflows, that is working very well for us. So kudos to Ed, and I think it's a lot easier system for everyone to use. And then lastly, I wanted to address that there has been higher incidence of graffiti in various places in our downtown, and we are working to find those who are responsible, but if there are members of the public who see things associated and related to that graffiti, report graffiti to us where you see it, because we work hard to remove that as immediately as possible, and then also just to keep your eyes and ears open, and if you see anything suspicious related to graffiti, to let us know. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions. Alderman, yours?
It's actually more for Gary. I forgot to, on the sidewalk program, I forgot to reach out to Rahat. It appears as though the corner of Chestnut and Van Buren, one of the crosswalk areas that comes out to the street, would not be ADA compliant, but it looks like it's also an awkward sewer configuration there. But I'm just be afraid of somebody saying, somebody tripping and falling on a non-ADA compliant thing. It appears to be non-ADA compliant, I don't know if that's true or not, but it's a narrow, it like narrows down because of a sewer grate that's there, but I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not.
I'll write that down. So it's where Chestnut and Van Buren. And the general rule on ADA compliance is that the federal government understands municipalities don't have a bottomless pit of money, so we need to address ADA issues as we encounter them. If it is a trip hazard, that's one thing. If it's just an old sidewalk that's not meeting 2022 ADA standards, but it met the standards when it went in back in the 60s or 50s or 70s, we don't have to touch it again until we're back in the area to improve it. So...
It was, it was repoured.
It was repoured, just recently?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then that's a totally different... I thought this was an old, I didn't understand from what you were saying.
Yeah, it was repoured, and it's not the right size.
Okay.
But there's a sewer, there's a stormwater right there, so I think it's probably a bigger issue than...
Okay.
Hey, just quickly go...
This is part of this year's program, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. I did not understand that from what you were saying. So I'll have them look at it, and we'll get an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody online or here have any others for tonight?
I just have one. Just a reminder, the Climate Action Plan that was sent out, you know, we'd really like to get everybody's feedback on that, so if you can take a couple moments to review it and, and, you know, give the feedback of what strategies are important to you. Money's not an issue, it, just look at it as, this is something that is really important to me. It'll really help us align of where the committee is at, and based on where staff is at and where Council is at, so, you know, recommendations can be brought back to, you know, what we're going to implement, or suggest to be implemented by the city.
All right. Nothing else? We will need a motion to go into executive session for setting the price of property for sale. Second. Motion by Solfah, second by Malley. Roll call, please.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Simone? Vocal Singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck? Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
And Chantet?
Aye.
Motion carried, 12 to 0.